Good afternoon, everyone. All right, welcome to the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, May 17th meeting. And I'm going to ask the dais to introduce themselves.
Kristy Rachel Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summer O'Dumas Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo County Administrator.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. Thank you all for being here. We start each meeting with silent prayer. We follow with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would just ask, we've had several fatal incidents on I-75 in a very short period of time. And just ask to keep all involved in your prayers. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second?
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes.
Okay, and we have public comments. Do we have any on Zoom? Not on Zoom, okay. All righty, so we have public comments. Chris Curran? But Curran, please correct me because I want to get it right.
Thank you, you have two minutes.
My name is Chris Curran. I serve as Vice Chair of the Sierra Club Miami Group and Chair of our Transportation Working Group. I've been a Hamilton County resident and taxpayer since 1985. On behalf of the Miami Group and as part of the Ohio Chapter and National Sierra Club, we appreciate the opportunity to share our thoughts with you regarding the Brent Spence Bridge Project. As noted in our letter to the Hamilton County Commission on February 8th of this year, we strongly support your efforts to seek cooperating agency status on the project. This is critical to proper oversight and management of a massive $3.6 billion construction project with long-term implications for the health, safety, and economy of our region. Thank you for continuing to pressure the Ohio Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration on this issue. In our limited time today, I would like to focus on three key areas of concern and to clearly state our support for efforts by Bridge Forward, Cincinnati City Council, former mayors Cranley and Mallory and others who are advocating for a design that maximizes the investment and minimizes the advert's impacts. We have advocated for decades for complete streets, protected green spaces, accessible and affordable transit, and environmental justice. It is rewarding and comforting to see so many others are now in agreement with our longstanding positions. The key concerns are included on paper with illustrations in the interest of time. Our key concern number one is the timeline between public comments, completion of the supplemental environmental impact statement, and groundbreaking does not allow sufficient time to provide input and to make revisions if needed. We're also concerned that Covington successfully incorporated two major infrastructures projects into one, the sewers and the bridges. May I continue or?
That your last sentence, you got one sentence.
All right, to look at the sewer and the overflows, and then that the current plans were adopted without really looking at what we call the spaghetti problem. And again, you have the more detailed comments in writing.
Thank you, thank you so much, thank you. Jimmy Hayden, did I say that right?
Yes ma'am, you did. Good afternoon, my name is Jimmy Hayden. I'm the Executive Secretary for the Greater Cincinnati Building and Construction Trades Council and a 29-year member of Ironworkers Local 44. When I joined the Ironworkers in 1994, we were all told about this project, this great big project that we're all going to get to work on. That was the Brent Spence Bridge. 2008, we heard about it again. And here we are, 2023, and we've got it. What we need to do is understand that there are opportunities for improvement with the city and some land that can be reclaimed and reconnect the west side that was cut off by 75. We can get that done as long as everything has been proposed. And from what I understand, everything's online, on market, ready to go. We're not going to lose any time. We're going to start on time, we're going to finish on time. But if the trades are ended, I promise we're going to be ahead of schedule. That's just what we do. So if all of that stays in play, we stay on task, we stay on target, we never lose sight of the goal. Labor's on this, got your back on the decisions you make with this, 100%. We always have been, we always will be. But we can all agree that this bridge is one of the most desperate pieces of infrastructure that this area has needed for so, so long, so long. So with your all's help and with the help of City Council, we can get this done and make this place the most vital shining star in the state of Ohio again. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian? Oh, I couldn't read your letter.
It's like Poland with a B.
Yeah.
The other day I was here and some people didn't know who I was, so I was taking a minute to tell you that. I'm a Cincinnati native, I grew up in Anderson Township, went to Anderson High School. In the 1980s, I know it was a long time ago, some people weren't even born yet. Most of the people that I graduated with wanted to do two things. Go to college somewhere else and get a job somewhere else. For some reason, I loved my city, I loved this area, I don't know why, but I decided to stay. I now live in North Avondale near Xavier University. I've also lived on the other side of the river, so I know what it's like to cross the river on any of the bridges we have, so they are vitally important. Talked a little bit about urbanism and walkability and bikeability things last time. I want to talk about something else that's equally important, perhaps even more important. And this is one of the things that sometimes gets lost in the discussion about the bridge. It's the 30 acres and then the possibility to connect west. I've given you a handout. This was something I did during my time at my master's program at Xavier University. This is just a quick analysis of the income, property tax impacts of urban building versus what they're proposing. A single block in OTR, if you look at the handout, has a tax value, property tax value that is 10 times the tax value of a block in Queensgate. That's 10 times more money to pay for services, to keep our parks green, to keep our infrastructure intact. So when we build this way, it's not just about making it nice for people to walk or bike. It's because there's a positive impact. Knowing the numbers is important, and it has to be a part of this conversation. But what's even more important is knowing what the project is worth. And so we sincerely believe, I sincerely believe, that many years from now, when we look back, this will be the most important decision that has come before you all in a long time. And people living then will be grateful for the decisions you make to pursue to do something that might be a fight, but is a worthwhile fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for staying in Cincinnati and Hamilton County. Gina Brock.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Wanted to take a moment and also address Commissioner O'Dumas's question about who we are. And we are a nonprofit. We are supported by dozens of people who you never see. You see me, you see Brian, you see the former mayors, and you see others who are the ones that speak for our organization. But what you don't see is the dozens of people who work very hard to support us, to put on community engagement, to rally their friends and families and community, neighborhood, community councils to care about this. And I want to take a moment to thank them because without it, we wouldn't be here today. However, I also want to thank you guys. You have been very progressive in watching out and been ahead of the curve on looking at this project. And you are now following up and doing everything that we could ever ask as citizens of Hamilton County to make sure that we're doing as much as we can to make sure this project goes well. But I also wanted to tell you my personal reason for spending my time as a mom and somebody who has two jobs, doing this as a nonprofit member. And it speaks to exactly what Brian said. I have four children, and they are wonderful. They will go out into the world, they'll make their mark, they'll do their thing. And all I want for them is to think to themselves, this is Cincinnati, it feels like home, but it also gives me a place that I can come and work, I can come and live, I can come home and raise my kids here just like mom and dad raised us here. That is the biggest thing I could want out of this project. It's not getting kudos, it's not getting my name anywhere. It is because I want my kids to come home someday. That's my background.
Thank you very much, thanks for sharing that. And Marilyn Wall.
Thank you. I just want to, Marilyn Wall, Sierra Club volunteer. And I just wanted to amend or add to Chris's comments before about the importance of addressing the stormwater issues along I-75. It's, you know, the Fonzie from 2012 said that they would use best management practices for stormwater, but that's really not what we've had. We've had some stormwater separation done, but not all the stormwater from the highway has been going to a body of water. Ends up back instead to combined sewer overflows. And certainly with the widened highway, we're getting even more stormwater than we previously did. And we really believe this needs to be part of the discussion and part of what gets agreed to in this whole process so that when administrations change, as has happened in the past, plans change and not as much stormwater was removed from some of the projects that had been considered. And secondly, we're really pressured for Shape Bridge Forward bringing up other alternatives to address the spaghetti problem of all this interstate and interconnections downtown and making this much more, an easier route for people as well as addressing issues like the air quality and the green space. So thank you very much for the work you're doing. We really appreciate you going after the cooperating agency status as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your all's comments and your presentation that you came. We wanted to allow Bridge Forward to make a presentation on Tuesday like we had ODOT make a presentation. I am personally supportive of a resolution, the right type of resolution. We asked the Administrator, for those who may be just tuning in, we are not currently, we don't have cooperative status, meaning we're not at the table as a decision maker. It's mostly Ohio Department of Transportation and Kentucky Department of Transportation. And our administration is fighting, we were rejected federally. Said we didn't meet the criteria, but our Mr. Beck, Eric Beck, our engineer, feels that we do as well as our Administrator Jeff Aludo. And we are reapplying, if you will, with some additional things and also looking for ODOT to be supportive. We also, on Tuesday, asked our Administrator to draft up a resolution, not exactly like the city of Cincinnati because we've got some other needs, et cetera, but similar and that all, each Commissioner can look at it and we can see if we could come to a consensus to have something before. I got a call that said, is it going to be on today? We don't move like that here at the county. And in fact, we are trying to get the cooperative status because that's when you really have the juice. Even with the resolution, we don't have the juice. We're trying to have the juice, so we at the table, people will take us seriously. I just asked Mr. Aludo if you have a maybe update or maybe repeat what you said Tuesday for those who are hearing this for the first time.
Certainly, I can repeat. I don't have an update since Tuesday, but the county administration, county engineer, we did reach out to FHWA to request what would be termed cooperating and agency status, specifically as it relates to a lot of the environmental work that's being done by the bridge coming through Hamilton County due to the fact that the county, as the principal and owner of the Metropolitan Sewer District, has a very strong stake in the management of wastewater and stormwater that will be impacted by the bridge, especially as it relates to the consent decree, which is, as the Board knows, a multi-billion dollar project that is going to be impacted by the bridge. So we believe that we have strong rationale to be designated as a cooperating agency, which would provide us quicker, more timely, and more robust ability to comment on decisions like the environmental policy documents are being put together by the project. So we requested that once, as you said, Madam President, we were rejected. We've gone back and asked FHWA some additional questions as to how they are working with ODOT and what type of direction has been given to ODOT in terms of their working status with the county. When we get the answer to that, we will then continue to push forward on that cooperating agency request.
And then you're working on a draft.
And yes, I'm sorry, we are, yeah, we are working on a draft of the resolution related to the Brent Spence Bridge project in general and the participation of the county in that regard, similar to what the city had done a couple of weeks back. So we're working on that. We'll have a draft review by the Board offices shortly, hopefully in time for consideration next week.
Thank you. How we operate, we can't, this is the only time we get to talk to each other, right here in front of you. So our staffs and administration, we have some back and forth. But your comments have been taken very seriously. So just wanted to tell you that. Vice President Dreehouse.
Yeah, just very quickly, I am looking forward to the document that we'll see next week. I do want to make sure, and I think we've all said it, that I think the city's document is a good starting point, but we do have some unique things that are relative to the city, especially the stormwater and the sewage issues and the cooperating status that we're trying to gain or some status that we're trying to gain in this conversation. So I'm looking forward to that document. And once again, I want to thank Bridge Forward for bringing this forward, and we'll have something to review next week. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Dumas?
No comments on the comments, thank you.
All right, our next speaker is William Jackson.
Good evening, madam and gentlemen. Thanks again for having the floor. And I just want to say, I put on the slip about mental health reform that is much needed in the city with a stigma that exists with even the word that was invented by some person. That a lot of it has to do with, a lot of experts would say that mental illness did not exist until we really took off with advances in our technology, which is the truth of a lot of matters. The people you grew up with, which I grew up around here and I was born in a place, I don't realize how much this affected my life, which a lot of people don't even believe what the truth of all it is. I've had to refile and for things that have been, got missing, which I'm doing again through our government, which shouldn't have happened to anybody. But the things I do now, I used to teach these public speaking classes in colleges I went to where you would, they would make you, force you to speak about things you really weren't passionate and you didn't care about. And that was nerve-wracking for me as a person that was signing up for those courses that were, our curriculum at these colleges where there's people, and the secret is I don't even think I have a GED. But that's a lie, but a guy that was appointed by the State of Ohio named Michael Tranter, when you, he's reappointed to remove these things that, to keep everybody secretive with other things. People show up and say they're Mister in here when they're really a doctor, that's a convicted felon, by the way. And there's a lot of reforms that need to happen with the anti-Semitic groups. It's not only their faults, they haven't seen a lot of things that people have seen. I never thought I would come back to this country at one point. I was seeking asylum, that was not granted. And Officer Smith, whoever he is, needs to be brought to a tribunal to find out who this Officer Smith is, if he's military or police.
Thank you. And now we go to comments and motions. I will start with Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a couple of things, I usually try to limit this to three, but I'm going to cheat today because there was so much going on this past week. So just a couple of things. I represented the county at the Sustainability Summit. I was there with Liz Keating and with Mika Owens, both council members, with the city of Cincinnati and Ali Croner. So as we all know, we're doing a lot in the green space and the sustainability space. And I got to brag a little about what the county is doing by way of EVs, by way of bike trails, by way of the solid waste plan, which is on our agenda today, and some of the forward movement that we have taken related to sustainability. So I was proud to represent the county at that. Also went to the Finley Garage Topping Ceremony, we were all three there. We are almost finished with the Finley Market Garage. Hallelujah is what we have to say to that. It is due to be open in November of this year, all things going well. And this fulfills our obligation to FC for the parking spots within the vicinity of the stadium and also adds this huge community benefit to the folks around Finley Market, both those that live there and those that do business there. So it was very exciting and we got to thank all the workers that are making that project happen. We all went to the Mobile Crisis Unit. I feel like I'm stealing thunder here, but I'm going to keep going. The Mobile Crisis Unit where we partnered with UCMC, who's also in the room, and the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board to bring that Mobile Crisis Unit operation 24/7 where it has not been in the past, running overnight and now will be, and also expanding it throughout the county. So it's very exciting and comes at a time where we know that the mental health crisis in this community is at a peak. So I was proud to be there with my two colleagues. I'm not going to go into the metro one, but I'm going to leave that for someone else. And then this morning, I attended the first of the Pay Equity Learning Series that we have. This was an outgrowth of the Commission on Women and Girls in partnership with the Women's Fund and with Eloquate. And so we had businesses in this community that said they wanted to sign on to the Pay Equity Signing Day, but they weren't sure that they were living up to pay equity. And if they weren't sure, they needed to know how they could be and how to put strategies in place to make sure that they were achieving pay equity. And so there are three programs to the series. The first one was held this morning, it was well-attended, and Mary Mountie did a really nice job of organizing that. So just wanted to recognize her efforts. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few things, I attended the Easter Seals Redwood Express event this past Saturday. It was a fundraiser for Easter Seals, it was a great event. The Finley Garage Topping Out Ceremony, my Chief of Staff attended for me. I heard it was also very exciting because we're coming down to the end for sure. The Mobile Crisis Unit, as was mentioned earlier, at UC, we allocated $5 million for additional staff. The first Mobile Crisis Unit started in 1986. I made the joke during my speech that I'm sure I was one of the social workers that called in in 1986 to get mobile crisis help. That's how long I've been a social worker. So I'm just really happy about the fact that we were able, through our ARPA money, to be able to give more money for them to do their job. And the Metro ribbon cutting and the press conference that happened will be, there's a new service going on out in the suburban areas. And this is, for me, has been a 20-year journey as I was mayor of Forest Park. I continue to let people know there's a half of Forest Park that has no bus access. And really until President, CEO Darryl Haley came into fruition with his team, he really listened. And they did a great survey just in that whole area of Mount Healthy in Springdale. We were in Springdale for this one. So there will be, you'll be hearing more, I want still his thunder, but there will be like an Uber concept. And you can call from in Forest Park or Springdale for $2, and they'll take you anywhere in your area to pick up groceries or whatever. And it's just a great idea and a great initiative, I'm really excited about it. And I just wanted to mention, the Bridge Forward presentation that was done yesterday, I really want to ask our engineer, not now, what his assessment thoughts are as it relates to the Bridge Forward Plan in relationship to the ODOT Plan. And if we were at the table for the ODOT Plan, do we think it would be something that we could work with? So I'm just going to throw that out, ask our engineer to look at both plans and also our Administrator and see where they are on that because they are the experts in that field, along with our community and residents who speak out and say what they want. There will be a press conference coming up, May 25th, at 10 o'clock for Beyond Your Imagination at TQL Stadium. This was initiative that I brought forward to the Board for foster children, adoptive children, kinship, group homes. There are young people who, for whatever reason, because they're in a foster home, are not able, because of the funds are so low, sometimes, to go to some of the concerts and activities that other young people go to. So this is specifically, Beyond Your Imagination, to allow you, if you hear something that's going on, you can ask your foster parent, is this something we can go to? So we're actually going to have the children and the parents put in their solicitation for different events and concert. And we're going to have, as I said, the press conference on May 25th. In addition, Inspire is another initiative that I brought forward in January to the Board, which they have been working, were in agreement with me. Inspire is an opportunity for anyone in the community who is working with young people again, coaches, mentors, dance teams. If you have, you can put in application, applications went out about a week and a half ago, and we are allocating up to $5,000 to undergird some of your expenses. Could be just uniforms, could be registration fees. But so far, we opened up the application process about a week and a half. We have over 50 applications that came through. So hopefully we'll be able to meet the needs of those who meet the criteria. Let's see, a couple of other things. I came up, as I think about the gaps that may be existing in Hamilton County, we got lots of money from ARPA, 158 million from ARPA, our American Rescue Plan Act. We're doing a great job getting those monies out. My concern is that some of those agencies, for instance, the Mobile Crisis Unit, we gave $5 million to, that I want people to be sustainable. I want agencies to be sustainable because this money is not always going to be here. The resiliency grants that we're doing, I want people and agencies to start thinking about, how can we maintain that same, or at least almost the same, level of service that we have now if the money is no longer here? By 2024, we have to allocate, designate where we want the rest of the money to go, and we have to spend it all by 2026. But I'm hoping that people are not getting comfortable or confident in the fact that we're giving out all this money and you don't have to think about a sustainability plan. So I thought about reentry, and we're doing great things. I looked at the statistics from our reentry department, and Trina Jackson is doing a great job as a Director. I looked at the numbers, how many are employed, housing, we put money in for housing, and we put money in for education. And it's, look, she's doing a great job, her staff is doing a great job. But I came up with, and I'm going to give my colleagues more information on this, but a new initiative, and it's called RISE. And it stands for Reentry Into Society and Employment. And the purpose of this initiative is that the people that have come through the criminal justice system, I've talked to several of them who want to work, who want to be independent. They don't want to depend on this society, but for whatever reason, people are not employing them. So I looked at our Hamilton County vacancies. We have two long pages of 50, 60 vacancies in Hamilton County. So if we're talking the talk, let's walk the walk. Are there any places where some reentry people can be employed? Or they could be apprenticeships in certain areas. The only cost to Hamilton County would really be that we maybe have two job coaches that would kind of follow them around, encourage them, mentor them, because the jobs are already open. So I'm going to present a formal proposal to my colleagues to see, and I've talked to Jeff about it. And I want these people that are really wanting to not go back to that system to have an opportunity. And they will rise out of poverty, rise from the darkness into the light, rise from dependency to independence, rise to be productive citizens of society. And I'm hoping we can move forward on this, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to share more with my colleagues. I believe that will end my report for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of things I want to say. I also did attend the Finley Market Garage Topping Off Ceremony. It's my first time ever participating in that. And a lot of people said they need parking down as they go to Finley Market and other places. In addition to that, I wanted to highlight to folks that one of the major issues that I talked about, I talked about a lot of major issues, but this was a big one as well, during the state of the county was that, how do we position ourselves as the number one county for small businesses? Small businesses are the heartbeat, the future. And any county or entity, city, state who doesn't have a viable plan to help people start small businesses, grow small businesses, and sustain small businesses will become a place of the past. Young people, women, minorities, even folks that have retired are looking at small businesses. Young people, women, minorities, even folks that have retired are looking at small businesses. America was built on small businesses as well. So one of the things I said, we had done a lot to help small businesses with ARPA dollars. We did $13 million. And when I came in, I co-hosted, along with the Urban League, a Small Business Day, because we would say, oh, we reached everyone, and we saw we did it. We had over 500 people who did not know about what we had to offer and had never had to come to the county for any type of help, because small businesses, they pride themselves. And, you know, we're self-made, we're not looking for anything, we do it ourselves. They pay taxes, but it comes a time when they need some help as well. And so we helped over 500 businesses. We had an outdoor drive-through. I said, we can't go inside, let's do it outside. And it was unique, because you drove through, we had alloy folks there who we fund, and they were helping people with the application. Because that's the other thing, if you're a small business, you don't have a lot of staff to take off, because if you leave the business, you're losing money. So you don't have all the attorneys and the accountants and all those people to help you find what's out here and what's available. They're very important to our business districts, storefronts. We see a lot of empty storefronts, we can't have that. So small businesses are very, very important. There are various layers to small business. I come from a family of entrepreneurship and grew up in entrepreneurship, so I understand the two phone bills, the two, you know, you got a mortgage, two mortgages, two rents. My mother would tell me, enjoy today, we may be eating beans tomorrow, because we have to pay the staff, and then we may come home with no money. So I had to learn all those concepts and have been working at every level, whether when I was at the city, when I was at the state, now I'm at the county. We have, one of the things I had introduced and my colleagues supported was to have the county's first-ever Office of Small Business, and that's huge. The second thing that our board did, and I'm very excited about, we have the first-ever WBE, MBE, and Small Business Program in the history of Hamilton County. And we have Mr. Robert Bell and his team working now to get more people to be able to participate, to provide goods and services. Our track record from the past was not the greatest. One time, we had $16 million in one quarter, we only spent $1,400 with minority businesses. But with this program, that will never happen again, is our hope. So with all of that, it comes and it's like, okay, you got an office, you did some grants, you've got all this going, but as a small business, how can I find all this? Well, you know, one pays, how do I, how do I connect? It's so much, it's so overwhelming. And so I want to thank my colleagues, I had put in the budget to have, and a lot of our initiatives come during the budget process. Each of us put in what we want during that time, and I wanted to have not just an office, and nobody kind of knows about it, let's have a Small Business Day. I had done it when I was a state representative and connected a lot of people with state contracts, which is the hardest thing to do, is get a state contract. And if the state could do it, I knew the county could do it. So on May 22nd, which is Monday, we will have our first-ever Small Business Day. And I want to thank the administration, working to make this come to fruition. We have 900 businesses that already have registered. And here, we'll be able to assist under one roof various types of businesses. You got the micro business, you got somebody who doesn't have a business plan, we got the people to help you go over here, they will help you with your business plan. Someone else said, I need technical assistance, how do I market my business? We got free workshops to show you how to market your business with Google and all this stuff that you might say, man, what's going on out here? We also will have our procurement director and team that will be there to talk to you one-on-one, how to do business with the county, what's available? People didn't know, I know JFS needed barbers, I didn't know that they needed somebody to do balloons. How do they, you would never think of that for county. So they will have all the things that are available from the county, along with jobs and family services and our other departments. Then we will have, we voted on $4 million of grants. This is the last shot of our grants, at least for right now. And we've done 13 million already, so the grant process has opened. It's not a first-come, first-served, but it's helpful if you can go and talk to somebody and then have the computer right there where you can apply right there. So if you've got questions, there's some experts to help you answer those questions. And so we've got that. We're going to be at the Sharonville Convention Center. We're doing a lot in Sharonville. I told the mayor, man, I was there for a ribbon cutter, for a beauty facility, then we were just there, is what I'm going to tell you about in a second. But we're back at Sharonville Convention Center, the parking is free, coming to it is free, the workshops are free. And we really believe that this connectivity with the small businesses and start to make us, put a stake in the ground, that Hamilton County, we want to be number one for small businesses, and this is the way that we do it. We've got some other things that are going to be coming up, some pitch nights and those kind of things, but I'm very excited, and people will get the chance to meet our new Director, Greg Forte, of the Small Business Office. So you'll be able to connect with him. You'll be able to find out about the WBE and MBE program. You'll be able to find out about certification, and how do you do it? And they'll be there with computers. I told them, we don't, this won't be a leaflet fair, because a small business does not have time to leave and be handed a brochure. We're losing money. This is interactive with the computers, and it's the real deal. So I'm very excited about it. And again, want to thank my colleagues for supporting this, because I really believe having a small, office of small business and having a Small Business Day where everybody knows what's available under one roof will lead us in the right direction. So I wanted to highlight that, and that is on Monday. Staying in Sharonville, as my colleagues have talked about, going to congratulate Darryl Haley and his team. But more importantly, I want to thank the taxpayers who passed Issue 7. None of this would be possible without it. And one of the things I find when we do these levies, the question becomes, now what? And I've been really on that, because I used to be the person that paid, asked a levy, but what happened with it? Who got the money? Where's the services? So I think we've been very, we are working to be very intentional about, here's what you passed. Now, report to us, what do the people get? And so one, out of that, Metro Now came, which is a, as they've described, an Uber-style on-demand, Uber without the Uber prices. $2 a ride and children free. And it's really nice vans to be able to take people. A lot of people in the suburbs can't get from one mile or two miles. You can't get on a bus and go downtown and then transfer and then come on back. It doesn't make sense. And so we had a lot of people out there, officials from Forest Park and Colrain Township and a number of areas that were there with us, and I want to congratulate Metro for the Metro Now On-Demand Shuttle Service and Mr. Haley and his entire team. It was great to have it. At the Healing Center, want to thank the Healing Center, the Director, just phenomenal out there. And what they're doing at the Healing Center, that helps a lot of people who are underserved, a place to go and help them. They're doing a phenomenal job, and they hosted it yesterday, so we were very excited about that. Yesterday was a bright day for us as the county commission, as they've indicated. We had that announcement, and then we had, so we was out in Springdale, then you come on, and we're in the city at UC Health in announcing this expansion of the Mobile Crisis Unit. I don't want to take this lightly. This board, we put a levy on for more money for mental health. This board has put money out of our ARPA money for mental health to try to stop teen suicide. We're looking at senior citizen suicide prevention as well. $5 million is no sneeze, to put $5 million to allow us to go 24 hours, because mental health doesn't check in from nine to five. You don't know when you're going to get hit, or when something happens, or when someone dies, and you got the grief, you know, it's hard. People always say, oh, you had the funeral, let's move on. It's tough, and then society is tough. People losing their job, can't pay their bills, everything's going up. You turn on the TV, it's negative, 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 negative. It is overwhelming. Children in school are being pressured, it's so much, particularly parents have to go through with children. Senior citizens, everything going up, don't want to go to a nursing home. So this $5 million added to what we've already done allows people to call 24/7 whenever it hits you, so that we can save lives. And this partnership, as Vice President Drehouse has indicated, is critical with law enforcement, nonprofit, and the medical community, and is a leader in Hamilton County. So just wanted to highlight that. Also talked with the, I met with the Children's Theater, they do a lot of great work. They're looking to purchase the Emory Theater and bet and told us about some of their plans to try to revitalize that, so I wanted to highlight that. Yeah, so I've got a lot of other stuff. We had a great presentation by the Senior Council on Aging. We had put together a senior program, something I initiated, and the commissioners supported me, I want to thank them. It was a pilot, and the pilot worked. Over 1,000 people were helped, who wouldn't have gotten help because of the federal guidelines, which I don't understand why they, seniors got hit in the, got caught in the, I guess the switches, if you will, because if you get a Social Security check, you couldn't get the ARPA money. But Duke Energy was going up, water bill was going up, and many didn't know where to turn, and we started this initiative, and we have it still going, helping people. Of course, there's always need for more money, but it's better than no money, and we helped a lot of seniors. So those are the things that I have. I'm going to open it up to Mr. Aludo for his comments.
Thank you, Madam President. Not a whole lot of comments, just when the board referenced the Finley Market Garage project, just wanted to thank Phil Beck for all of his work on that. As the board knows, he's managing two 20-plus-million-dollar projects right now, and the, both the banks, managing the banks, actually, more than one, more than two. You got the banks, you got the Black Music Walk of Fame project, and the Finley Market Garage, and Phil's managing all of that, so just want to really thank him for all of his hard work there. There are four by leave items on your agenda, Commissioners. Madam President, 1, 2, and 4 are board appointments. I'll defer to you as to how you want, I'm happy to hit any or all of them, but I'll defer to you in terms of your preference on handling any of these. I'm happy to hit number 3, which is the settlement action.
Yes, why don't we advance item number 3, and then I'll take the others.
Happy to. By Leave number 3 in your packet is a resolution authorizing the settlement of a civil action involving the Board of County Commissioners, Hamilton County, and Hanky Partners LTD and Hanky Associates LLC. The administration recommends approval of the settlement.
I'll make a motion to approve by Leave 3.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimon.
Yes. Okay, thank you. By Leaves 1, 2, and 4 are appointments. By Leave 1 is appointment to the Convention Facilities Authority, Katie Egan. By Leave 2 is a appointment to our Tax Incentive Review Council, Tom Moller, Jessica Johnson, and David Thompson. By Leave 4 is amending our designated members to the Board of County Commissioners, particularly the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which would be Vice President Drehouse, and I want to thank her for that. And I will open it up for comments. No comments? I'll make a motion.
Let me just, I want to thank those that are willing to take on these roles and volunteer for these commissions. It's a volunteer position in all cases, so very grateful for them being willing to provide their service to the county. And with item number 4, I do want to say that I think it's critically important that the county commission have a seat at the CBB. It is designated to be a county seat, the city has a seat, and we have a seat. Got a lot going on with the Convention Center District, and so I am anxious to fill a seat there for the county.
Thank you. Commissioner DeLue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. By Leave 4, I had sent a note to your office as it relates to a revision on this resolution that we have in front of us. There's a critical element, I believe, that's missing, and this is appointment of Vice President Drehouse to the CBB. I think, and I'm a history person, when you look back at history, I want to know why after six months of a decision we made in January that we're changing that decision. And I think it's more, it's very appropriate to add another line in this resolution to indicate why the change is taking place, because I would wonder, even as a resident, why are they changing this, and it's only been six months into the year? And so I think there needs to be a revision. I did write a note about it, and I'd like for that to happen, if we can do it from the desk. I can give a revision, or if you would like to.
Well, I want to read the, I think it's clear in this, in this resolution, there's a couple of things I'll go back on. Number 1, history, if it was history, three women wouldn't be sitting up here if we just went with history of this county in 150 years. So we are making a lot of changes on this board. Number 2 is, there's nothing that's hidden, I mean, it's in here, none of these boards that I, well, we saw that were in the Ohio Revised Code, which is what makes us have to be here. Ohio Revised Code said I got to be here on two days to vote, and those are the two days that we're here. Everything else is extra. I know there had been some issues even on here, where with the Southwest, with the Southwest Board, there was some issues, because they had had me, I guess, still on there, but you were on there, and that was six months ago, Southwest Ohio Regional Workforce Investment Board, and I think we got that clarified. But it's nothing to hide on here, it says, now therefore be it resolved that Vice President Drehouse will now serve on Visit SNC CBB Board. And one of the things we've also had, when there's things that I, a president can't do, the vice president goes in, and then it goes down. My position on the Convention and Visitors Board, I have served on that board before already, so I've had a long history of serving on the board in other capacities. At this time, I am involved with the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, the newest tourism attraction in the whole state of Ohio right now, and I don't want any type of potential conflict. So I thought it would be best that the vice president serve in that particular position. So that's where we were. We had some slip-ups on who was going to write the resolution. I thought we had already mentioned it, and I thought Mr. Aludo was going to write it, and I think he thought that the Chiefs was going to write it, so we've got it resolved. I mean, it's really nothing, nothing there, it's nothing to hide. It's out in the front, and it says on here, now therefore be it resolved, the change would be Denise Drehouse was now sir on the Visit SNC Board.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not saying anybody's trying to hide anything. Of course, we know, we know that we are a historical board up here. But I would like to know, and I like to have in the history books, the fact of why when we were told what committees we had, that it had to change in six months. And I'd like to make a motion that we, because it said, let me just read, it's a short resolution, whereas in accordance with statutory requirements in our composition in a particular Hamilton County Committee Council or Board, it is necessary for the Hamilton County Commissioners to serve in various capacities. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners, Hamilton County, Ohio, has agreed to share in the responsibility to fulfill this obligation, which we have, then it says, now therefore be it resolved, that Vice President Denise Drehouse will now serve on Visit SNC CBB Board. The element that's missing is why are we changing it from you to her? And I would like to make a motion that due to the fact that, I won't say conflict, you did say something just now about conflict of interest, but the fact that you're unable to perform that duty as it relates to the SNC Board, I think needs to be put in there. We don't know why it's happening. We're working right now with the Convention District Center and all the development that's going on there, and I think it needs to be made clear why you're not being the representative, because it's very specific that the president is supposed to be the rep, especially during this time with all the construction that's going on. When you say, where does it say it?
Is that in Ohio? I would not accept anything that's not in the Ohio Revised Code. Because I can ask you why you haven't been to the certain meetings. So I just, I don't know where you're trying to go with this. I'm trying to figure it out. I've been right up front with it. And I'm not unable to fulfill my duties as a president. I've been fulfilling more duties than some presidents has ever served. I would like to see where this is, has this ever been in the history of Hamilton County? So I don't know where you're trying to go, or what message you're trying to carry, or who you're carrying it for, but the bottom line is, I indicated, we all can sit down at the beginning and say, here are boards we want to serve on. That's how we came about it, from my understanding, from the Chiefs and staffs.
So as president for the last two years, it was the indication So as president for the last two years, it was the indication of where the presidents were representing and what committees, and that's what I did as president. So I think it needs to be made clear, and I appreciate Vice President Drehouse for stepping in to be our rep, because we have not had a rep since January due to your inability or conflict of interest to be on that board.
I want to, well, hold, hold it for a second. Hold it one second, because you, you walk in a thin line toward a, coming at, you're trying to, your inability, your, your conflict of interest. I didn't say I have, I don't have a conflict of interest, but I do, I am leading the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. It's a tourism attraction, and so I have to focus there. It has taken a lot of time. In addition to that, I've been very clear, this resolution is clear, there's nothing in it that hides it. We're having resolutions all the time. We're going to have a resolution where the One Ohio will have different people than than we're on there, because some of the people that were there, they're unable to, to do that. And I don't think they've had that many meetings, if I'm not mistaken. And so therefore, what we're trying to do is have a resolution that we can present. And by the way, let's see, what time did you send this to us? You just said this, this was already on the agenda.
No, I got an email. It's, you know, it's not about me, it's not.
Well, it seems like it is, because we got someone that, well, the public knows, I'm an open book. I'm an open book. I'm out on, I'm out here in the public on Facebook, we live, we on YouTube. I just said what I said, it's in the minutes. I don't understand where you're going. But I'm not going to take it where you're putting insinuations about you're unable to fulfill your duty. What you did as president, I'm going to be doing a lot more. I feel like I'm doing more. But we won't go there, because all of us have different ways we do presidency. I do it differently. There's a lot of stuff that didn't happen before I got here. We didn't have a 513 relief bus. It was hard to get. It wasn't like I sat up here and we just go along with it.
I'd like to make a motion to add a line that says, due to your inability to attend those meetings for all those reasons you just came up with, that Commissioner, Vice President Denise Drehouse will be serving on the board, on the CBB Board. That's all I'm asking, if we can put that line in, because I, I would wonder, why did we end up changing it in the mid, in midstream? And I think the residents need to know that you said you don't have the, you know, you lack Hall of Fame.
Well, maybe they do the fact that Commissioner Reese is working on a number of initiatives, a small business office. 513 relief bus that helped 4,000 people. I would, I would move to amend your motion. The Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, the first equity project that the county's ever done on the banks. If we want to amend it to say those things, I'll be unable, I think it'd be best suited for Vice President Drehouse to serve, and she has agreed to serve. That's one of the things. We had to give people someone who could agree, and she did agree, and I want to thank her. But if we're going to put that, then we got to put all, I'd like to have all that in the motion.
Well, she agreed.
Because you're talking about history.
There was a vacancy for once.
Well, my point is, after his, the reason why I'm saying this, you're trying to put a historical record that in 20 years from now, when we're gone. No, you don't tell me, I'm going to tell you when I call the question. It's not called the question, I have.
Because I was the one that had the comment.
I have the floor, we have not called it the question.
I had a comment, so my comment, don't worry about my comment.
Discussion on the motion.
And I was the one that had the discussion, I'm done with my discussion.
Well, I, we opened it up for discussion on the motion, since you brought it up. And I'm saying 20 years from now, when we're all gone, I want the record to reflect, why was it? Well, Commissioner Reese has a Black Music Walk of Fame that she initiated. Commissioner Reese with first equity project. Why wasn't she? Commissioner Reese had a 513 relief bus that was very tough to get going, and it has helped over 4,000 people, and she's going to 79 out of the 74 locations. Why was it? Because Commissioner Reese is focused on a small business, all of us a small business, so we could put that. I didn't want to put that, but if we're going to put that for the record, we got to have, we're talking about my record now, that's 20 years from now.
We didn't get a second.
But do you want to, do we have a second for the motion? You're good? Okay, I have a motion to pass by leave number four.
So I, I do have one comment.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Related to this item. Yeah, so I think it is, it is written in the CBB regulations that the president and the board serves on the CBB. That has been our tradition. I served, Commissioner Dumas served, the expectation that Commissioner Reese would serve. Commissioner Reese is unable, I don't, I don't, will put words in your mouth. I think it's critically important that the county is represented on the CBB. I agree. And I am willing to do this as a county commissioner, because I think it's critically important at this moment in time that we have somebody there, and we have not in the past couple of months. So I just want to be clear that I don't believe it's related to the Ohio Revised Code. I think it's related to the CBB, and I think that's how those, the language is written.
Thank you for that clarification. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is private entity, is their rules, not ours. And I want to thank the vice president, usually when the president is not somewhere, the vice president is, and I do agree, that someone should be on that board. I want to also say that that does not preclude, we would have to make some tough decisions about convention districts and all that, and that will have to come before this board, which I will be still the president. I make a motion by leave number four to be adopted.
Is it one, two, and four?
Oh, that's right, one, two, and four, thank you.
If you could separate four, I would appreciate it.
Okay. One and two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Item number four, by leave four.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the engineer. Welcome back.
Thank you, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just have two quick items today. Item number one is a resolution to install no parking signs on both sides of Snyder Road from Kemper Road to the limited access right-of-way line on I-71 in Sims Township. We've got complaints from Sims Township and the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office of vehicles parking in the right-of-way obstructing sight distance from an access to the township side streets, and this is the location where you come over the overpass on I-71, so you're coming up over a rise and come down, and there's limited sight distance. So our recommendation is to put no parking in that area for the safety of the traveling public. Item number two is a resolution putting Project 502105, which is a cliff road landslide stabilization, out to bid. This is located in Miami Township. The engineer's estimate is 759,000. We've secured $237,771 in Ohio Public Works Commission grants for this project. This would allow us to take this project out for bid and get it built by the end of this year.
Any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
You want to go with item number two?
That was item two.
Oh, I'm sorry. You went so fast. Okay, I make a motion to approve items number one and two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, I'm sorry, next, we're going to our Commission Administration, items three through six. Jeff, you want to walk us through?
I will turn it directly over to Sarah for items three and four. We'll have Lisa Webb up to talk about some levy items for five and six, and then I believe Michelle Balls from the Solid Waste Management District is here to walk us through the ratification of the solid waste plan. So Sarah?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here on items three and four, as Mr. Aludo just stated. Item number three is a resolution with Ensemble Theater of Cincinnati for $113,850. This item does fall under our Youth Resiliency Grants, where we are working with 27 organizations for around $3.9 million of funding that we're working with. This one will also fall under our Youth Resiliency of working with ages nine to 19 youth and making sure that they are coming out of COVID, they're working with mentors, and expanding their horizons from everything they went through with COVID. Ensemble, they will be expanding their Hunter Heartbeat Method, which will serve 750 students ages nine to 19 with autism and other developmental disabilities. The Hunter Heartbeat Method is a series of sensory games that lead students through a storyline of Shakespeare plays, allowing students to explore emotions, character, relationships, and gain a strong sense of overall themes. They are planning to hire additional staff to make sure they can take on additional students, along with reducing costs, and then also applying no cost for some students that can't afford to pay. We actually have with us three of the people that are with Ensemble. We have Josh Newmeyer, the Managing Director, Shannon Ray Lutz, the Properties Curator, Design Assistant and Director of the Apprenticeship Programming, and Lynn Myers, Producing Artistic Director and Chief Executive Officer. I would like to ask them, they come up and join me, they can further expand on the program, and together we can answer any questions.
Awesome, welcome.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Victoria Azlanides, and I am the Director of Education at Ensemble Theater Cincinnati. I can't overstate my profound gratitude for the award that we've been given. The programming that we do is very near and dear to my heart. I've been with Ensemble Theater's education programming now for over six years, so I have seen over, over many, many years how this programming can positively impact the students that we serve. The ability to basically double our capacity, if not more than that, for this programming is astounding. Thank you, sincerely.
I'm Lynn Myers, I'm the Producing Artistic Director. Thank you. You're changing the future. This is exactly, I believe, the purpose of these kind of grants, to build, to recover, to move forward, when you can hear a parent say to us, that's the first time my child's looked at me and he's 11 years old, or the first time my child's been invited anywhere and been welcomed. That changes the shape of what happens and what is to come. You've made that difference. We will make sure that we are champions of what you've supported, and you're in really, really good hands here with Victoria. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one quick question. You guys walked away from the microphone. I have one quick question. So I understand you're expanding this program. Can you tell us how many kids with disabilities you serve?
Microphone.
I'm sorry, you got to get back to the microphone. Should have held you there.
Coming out of the pandemic, we are currently serving eight area schools, and our hope, like I said, is to double that number, if not beyond doubling that number, with the positions that we're going to be able to open up with this funding. That's going to be approximately, I believe, 70 to 80 students right now, but we are, we are, we have a lot of exciting plans for this funding and how it's going to impact our programming.
Can I ask you, are the 70 to 80 all kids with disabilities, or are they mixed in?
Yes, ma'am. All the students we serve with this programming are students with developmental disabilities of different kinds.
Wow, that's really fantastic. My daughter teaches kids with disabilities, and I know how difficult that work is, so thank you for the program, it sounds very innovative.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. I remember you, I remember you guys coming to my office and speaking about the autistic population, and you say 750 youth, we really, the tension that they need is almost doubled, it's like 1,500 young people. And I remember, I think it was you talking about the lighting, when they come into the theater, you make sure the lighting doesn't affect them the way it would maybe affect another child. So this is great, I'm glad we were able to help with this. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do, and I think this amount is, bless you, the amount is a low amount in terms of the dollars and the amount it takes when you're dealing with children with disabilities. So we're definitely getting a lot of bang for this buck, and I just want to thank you again as someone who's experienced, someone really close to me with child with autism, I learned a lot, and it is tough, it's tough. Thank you very much.
Moving on to item number four, this is actually going to fall under another area. I know I usually have several, but we actually almost have all of our youth ones done, we only have three left, and we'll have all of those contracts signed. So this one is a resolution with the Center for Closing the Health Gap of Greater Cincinnati for $1.3 million. This program will be implemented under the 513 relief bus funding, and will address critical health disparities for residents and concentrated disadvantaged communities. They will expand the Do Right campaign in communities such as Lincoln Heights, Lachlan, Mount Healthy, Woodlawn, and North College Hill. Through the Do Right campaign, they will provide outreach and education, introduce and embed diabetes and cardiovascular disease prevention, and as needs arise in the community, outreach and education to all Hamilton County residents who are vaccine hesitant or high risk for complications and populations for COVID-19. Resources will be culturally and linguistically appropriate, and they will work directly with our wonderful 513 relief bus team to leverage resources and community outreach. And this evening or today, we have Renee McAfee Harris, President and CEO, and Akisa M. Ariba, probably messed that up, Manager of Health Advocacy and Strategies with us today to answer any questions and expand further on this wonderful program.
Welcome. Welcome back.
Hello, first of all, thank you, President Reese and Commissioner Drehouse and Commissioner Dumas. Thank you for your ongoing support of the work that we've been doing to address health disparities. But we are honored and very excited to be able to expand our Do Right campaign in conjunction with the 513 relief bus, so that we can really address the preventative strategies necessary to reduce and improve upon the health outcomes for marginalized populations throughout Hamilton County, specific to the diseases of diabetes and cardiovascular disease, as well as increase the awareness and outreach through our We Must Save Us campaign, which really is activating the agency of individuals to understand the role and how they can be a part of their health solutions as we work collectively with our health systems across this company. So that's all I have to share, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, our Do Right campaign has been around since the organization started in 2004. We have served over 369,000 individuals through that campaign by equipping them with the tools to be a part of their own health solution, activating their agency in nutrition, activating their agency, and understanding how physical activity and preventative strategies, and knowing their numbers, and frankly, how to work within their family to address some of the generational factors that contribute to the ongoing unfortunate increased rates of diabetes and hypertension with our children under the age of 18 in particular.
Thank you. I'll open up Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you for being here, Renee, and I've already forgotten your name, Akasa. Thank you both for being here, really appreciate it. Closing the Health Gap has always been such a great partner to the county, especially during the COVID times, when you were extremely helpful in moving the needle in the African-American community, and trying to get people vaccinated and communicate in a way that resonated with people throughout the county. So really, really grateful for your partnership there, and you will be a great partner on the 513 relief bus. I think I have a Do Right t-shirt at my house from probably 20 years ago. I mean, it's been forever, but I'm grateful that you're still doing that good work and bringing the, the health message to people that live in our community. So thanks for your work.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. I don't want to be repetitive, but you guys have been doing this for so long and doing such a great, having such a great impact, your Do Right campaign and We Save, it's it, We Must Save Us? Yeah. That campaign during the pandemic was just unbelievable, and to have someone in the community, such as you and your staff, to actually reach the ones that sometimes don't want to be reached. So this is a no-brainer for me, that you guys should have, I know you've gotten some smaller grants and things like that, but I'm sure you'll do even more great work with this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Join in saying thank you so much. Sometimes people don't know what they have until a crisis hits, and the Health Gap had the infrastructure, able to meet those where they are, get the messaging to them the way they need to hear the message, because sometimes you can have a message, you're up here, but you got to get a message. How does, what does this mean to you? How do you get the message? When we talk about diabetes, in our community, your sugar is up, that's what my great aunt would say, you know, the sugar is up. How do we talk about arthritis? She's, oh, I say, how you doing, Auntie? She's, oh, the author done got me. I said, who's author? She said, arthritis, it's got a hold of me. You know, so the way that we have to speak so people feel comfortable and they're not feeling like we're talking down to them, or they don't understand these medical terms. And we saw that when COVID hit, you were able to get right into action to meet the people where they are, excited about having you to be a part of. excited about having you to be a part of. You always were a part of, but really a part now of the 513 Relief Bus, where we have a state-of-the-art bus with your awareness of how to speak to the people. And so when they come on and they get a blood pressure check and it says you're way up, you got Do Right right there to say, "Here's how we gonna get it down, and we're gonna follow up with you." So I'm excited about it, I thank you for all your work and, yeah, very excited about this, so thank you.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
And that finalizes both of my items for Items Three and Four.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Items Three and Four.
Second. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all, you're welcome to stay, we have exciting, as you can see, exciting meetings. But if you have to go, you're on a meter, I know you gotta go. You gotta go help some young people, get on out of here. Health Gap, I know you got to help some folks. Yeah, you got some lives have to be saved, so thank you all. Welcome.
Thank you. I have Items Five and Six on the agenda. Item number five is a resolution for the Council on Aging, Council on Aging of Southwest Ohio Levy Contract for the Senior Services Levy, which was approved by the voters in November. It is a five-year contract for the levy. It totals $146 million in assistance programs for the elderly services program, the utility assistance program for seniors. Also included in this in the next cycle is Caregivers, which is run by the Health Gap when they were here, and the Center for Respite Care for homeless senior respite services as well. I know Council on Aging did a very thorough presentation on Tuesday, but I can't answer any questions you may have related to that agreement as well.
Look, can you do six and then?
Yeah, I can do six as well, I just pause there for questions. Item number six is an interim agreement with, for the Hamilton County Health and Hospitalization Tax Levy. That is an interim agreement to continue to provide funding through June 30th, so the first half of this year, as that contract has continued to be negotiated between the county and the hospitals, for indigent healthcare services provided at University of Cincinnati Medical Center and Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center.
Great.
And that totals $1,764,000, which is four months, four of the 10 payments annually made to the hospitals.
I'll open it up for questions or comments, Vice President Drehouse.
I have no questions. I would have had a question about the large amount in five, but it's been explained. And we're, I'm happy to support this program. Council on Aging is a fantastic partner, we're lucky to have them in addition to UCMC and Children's Hospital in Item Number Six. So thank you for bringing them forward, I'll be supportive of both.
Commissioner Dumas.
Well, I'd just say on Item Number Five, as you were saying, Council on Aging, they're just great. And we know the seniors are increasing and they have increased needs, and I'm glad that we're continuing to provide some of the help with their services, so.
Thank you, both very important. The taxpayers went to the polls and voted for these dollars, and now the dollars are going to the agencies to help the people. So we're very excited today to have these dollars being focused, and it's our job to pass these dollars on to the agencies that can help the people. So I make a motion to approve Six and, Five and Six.
Second. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Just one quick addition, just for notification purposes. The levy plan for the Senior Services Levy is slightly higher than what we appropriated in the budget this year. There will be a supplemental resolution coming forward so that they can have all of the funding they need to provide as many services as possible to seniors in this calendar year.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, Michelle Balz is here for Item Number Seven, related to the Board of County Commissioners ratification of the County Solid Waste Management Plan.
Thank you, so Michelle Balz, Solid Waste Manager for Hamilton County Resource. Every five years, we have to update our 15-year solid waste plan. And according to a higher revised code, we have to have this ratified. So we are in the ratification period. We started this process two years ago in May of 2021. We went through an extensive public input period. We had over 800 residents respond to our survey. We gave presentations at 45 of the 48 jurisdictions within our solid waste district. And we had several focus groups. We worked especially with our diversity, equity, inclusion consultants to have a focus group specifically about small businesses, minority-owned businesses, and women-owned businesses. So we have now created a plan, we're very proud of the plan. It's pretty aggressive, we have some pretty high goals of increasing our residential diversion rate from 18% to 27%, and our commercial diversion rate from 43% to 50%. And it also has a focus on reducing food waste, and it aligns with the USCPA and the USDA goals of reducing food waste by 50%. So we are, we've got a lot of great programs that we're continuing from the previous one, and we're also adding some new programs. But we are required, according to a higher revised code, to have communities representing 60% of the population approve the plan, and we are required to have the Board of County Commissioners approve the plan, so. Here we are.
Higher revised code, Vice President Drehouse.
Yes, so as the Chair of the Solid Waste Policy Committee, I'm delighted that you're here, and I'm delighted that we're at this point of ratification. It has taken us a little while to get here. But Michelle, I want to commend you, I want to commend the team, thank the members of the Policy Committee for their input related to the plan, and all the people that you engaged in the community. There were hundreds of people that weighed in related to this plan from all over the county. And I know you took many trips out to the jurisdictions to make sure that you had broad support for the plan. And I think that's very important. I know it's required, but it's also very important that we have that kind of input from people throughout the county who have very different takes on what we should be doing related to this plan. So really grateful for your work in that, Karen Lukin as well, Karen Dean, Karen Lukin.
Karen Lukin.
Karen Lukin, okay, I'm not sure what she goes by now. I know it's a lot, well, Karen and I go way back, so showing my age on that. But I do want to say that this passed unanimously at the Policy Committee level. We had a lot of discussions about the aggressive nature of these numbers, which I think is also important to note, and you did note it. They were trying very hard to keep trash out of the landfill. And we are trying to do things a little differently, engage these communities, especially when it comes to residential diversion and commercial diversion. We've got some grant programs for businesses to help them get started with diversion, especially related to recycling. But the one thing that we had a lot of conversation about and conversation with the city about was the idea that we want to do more related to organics and keeping organics out of the landfill. That is yard waste, that is food waste. There's a lot of progress to be made in this space, but we need to do it together with the city and the other jurisdictions. And so in this plan, there is a commitment to study that, to make sure that we are doing it correctly, that we engage the private sector. If we can lower the cost for the county and the city by having the private sector step in, that would be optimal. And so there's going to be a conversation about that and about citing and about size and timing and all the things that go along with it. But I think that we are serious about this. I think it's kind of the next frontier for us to try to divert organics from the landfill. And so that is included in this plan, and I'm very proud of the collaboration between the county and the city and the Solid Waste Committee on that front. So thanks again for your work, Michelle. It's been a labor of love for you, I think. And I'm glad again that we're here for ratification for the board, so that, we're the first stop, am I right? Yeah, we're the first stop, and then it goes, we're trying to get this done first, and then it goes out to everybody else, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Yes, thank you, Michelle, very inclusive plan, I really like it. Your goal of 50% as it relates to food waste is an aggressive goal, but the young man that you hired to kind of steer that, spearhead it, I'm just sure it will happen. And so however, the county can even be more involved with, you know, these restaurants that are throwing away all this food. And I talked before and asked about partners that you have, and you do have some partners in that area, but even if we can increase more partners, that would be great. So thank you for your plan, appreciate it.
Thank you for your work and your plan, I think we all agree. And we also thank you for your presentation. So people could watch, if they were at home, they could see it on Zoom, they could see it on YouTube, they could follow along with you. And I like the fact that it's diversified in terms of being very comprehensive, dealing with almost every level that we could possibly think of. So thank you very much, and I am recommending passage of Item Seven.
Second. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Aludo, back to you.
Thank you, Madam President, I'll just walk through the consent agenda here very quickly. Item number eight is the Auditor's Financial Transactions for 2023. Item number nine is a $1.5 million budget adjustment, includes items such as technology expenses, cloud-based storage expenses, some alcohol monitoring devices and probation, and the transfer of various grants. It also includes the construction costs related to the Cliff Road landslide item that Engineer Beck brought up a little bit earlier. Item number 10 is the purchase of a 2023 Ford Ranger in planning and development for $43,000. Items number 11 and 12 are two insurance items. 11 is our law enforcement liability insurance program for the Sheriff's Department and the patrol services provided in the townships at $135,048. Item number 12 is our award of bid for our property insurance program for Hamilton County properties at $1.3 million. Item number 13, 14, Items 13, 14, and 15 are also human resources items. Number 13 relates to codifying the diversity of our interview panels under the Board of County Commissioners. Item number 14 is just a technical fix to our Personnel Policy Manual to make sure that the wording corresponds better with the Fair Labor Standards Act for who is eligible for overtime and comp time. Item number 15 is a, just again, modifying the personnel policy related to the reemployment of retirees to make sure that it is clear that that is only in exceptional circumstances and requires sign-off by HR and county administrator. Then we have two items under JFS. We have a foster care agreement with Lighthouse Youth Services in Cincinnati for $6.4 million. We have translation services, telephonic interpretation services, a contract for those for $136,000. We also have the Treasurer's Report for the month of April, and we have the request of travel for five employees, four in the Coroner's Office to Austin, Texas, one in the Coroner's Office to Columbus, Ohio. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Item number 13, I wanted to highlight, and this is regarding interview panels. And one of the things I thought was important as we were seeking to be more diverse when I got here, was the fact that we didn't have all of the interview panels, we're not diverse. So how would we get to diversity? And so I introduced a plan to get us there in terms of not just this item, but also as it relates to what we now obviously have. We have a program now, but when I had seen the lack of diversity at that time in promotions, lack of diversity on the interview panels, lack of diversity on the contracts, I said, "How can you get there if we don't have diversity on the boards?" And I didn't get there by myself. Joe Mallory, NAACP, and the Urban League CEO at that time, made that as one of the recommendations that we could do even before we had gotten the disparity study done. I know, Mr. Aludo, you began to do that anecdotally, I appreciate that after that was presented to you. But now you wanted it in here to have it where it doesn't have to match personalities, it's the way we do business. Am I correct with that?
Yes, that's correct. So this is an effort, and we had talked to the board about this as well, that we were doing it administratively, but we wanted to codify it ultimately. So this is bringing it forward, and as we've talked with the board on several occasions about various things that we do, regardless of what it is, just trying to codify that into the DNA of the organization and make sure that, long after we're here, that those types of processes and procedures carry on.
I just want to say I'm happy about that, Item Number 13, I just wanted to point that out. So thank you very much. Vice President Drehouse, anything?
I too was going to shout out Item Number 13, something that I was concerned about when I got here as well, so it dates back a little while. And I'm glad, again, that, this shows some intentionality of the administration, and as you say, codifies this into a standard practice for us. And so I think it will definitely help us diversify the workforce, because as you say, Commissioner Reese, you know, it's hard to get that done if you don't have the right folks sitting at the panel, at the table doing the hiring. So I wanted to shout out 13 as well. One question about 16, only because of the dollar amount associated with it, and when something is over $6 million, just want to get a little bit of clarity. I'm grateful that Lighthouse, again, is a partner with the county to provide services for the youth that are served there. But can you help us understand the $6 million?
I would just defer, because I think Laura Wolf is on with us today, so I'll just defer to Laura, and I know she's very familiar with the contract and can just explain the terms and the dollar value.
Yes, good afternoon. Actually, Lighthouse is a wonderful community partner. We have more children placed in foster care with them than almost any other foster care agency. And we've obviously used them because they're local, but they're also a great partner with other services that we use within the children's services area. We did do some, we're doing some additional incentives this year with our foster care providers. And one of them were some fairly significant increases with rates due to costs going up, but also to help move children out of residential care into local foster homes. And they're also a partner with us on a tiered foster care pilot with the state of Ohio. So it's something where they have been a tremendous partner and wonderful to work with.
Can I ask a follow-up? Is this, are these children primarily older kids?
Not all of them. This, they accept a lot of our kiddos, starting at zero, but they do have a number of our older teens as well, which is wonderful. It's hard for us to get foster homes that are open to accepting older teens and sibling sets.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at, and that's what I was wondering, I didn't want to read into it. But I know it's harder to place older kids, and Lighthouse does a good job of addressing some of the needs of those kids. So I would just wanted to get some clarity, so thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Yes, that's it.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Laura, as it relates to foster care services, that's one of our higher level of funding. If we look at, I don't know, residential, we look at independent living, foster care is one of the higher level of funding for JFS.
We have more children in foster care than we do with any other level of care.
So it's the amount of children that you have that makes it number?
Yes, it's, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, we're trying to get them into kinship too, which is our second highest level, where kiddos are placed. But foster care is our highest area, where we have placements of young people.
That's what I thought, okay, thank you. I don't have any other comments.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Items Number Nine through Nineteen. Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Am I doing it right? I'm sorry. Sorry. Thank you, Mike, I want to make sure you were still here with us, with us, with us. All right, I make a motion to approve Items Eight. Approve and accept, for the record, Items Eight through Nineteen.
Second. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.